Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
My heavenly Father, as we enter this council chambers, we bring your presence with us. I speak your peace, your mercy, and your honor into the chamber. I acknowledge your power over all that we've spoken, thought, decided, and done within these walls. And oh Lord, when we leave this place, give us traveling mercy. Lord, I thank you for everything you've done, everything you're doing, and everything you're going to do. In the name of Jesus, I pray with much love and thanksgiving, amen.
Amen.
Okay, our number three, approval of minutes for March fifth, 2019 council meeting. Can I get a motion?
I'll start, Father.
And I second.
Mr. Prophet movement second to be approved the minutes for March fifth meeting, 2019 council meeting. All in favor, if there's no sign of aye.
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, right, Mr. Carers. Our number four, approve of the meeting agenda itself. Motion for that.
I'll make a motion that we approve the meeting agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, the prophet movement second, we approve the meeting agenda, all in favor. If there's nobody signing aye. Ladies and gentlemen, right, Mr. Carers. Report standing committee, it's um DDR, it was Lisa Rock.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tomorrow, the DDR will hold its annual golf tournament at Darlington Country Club sponsored by Carolina Bank, Darlington Raceway, Fitness World Gyms, and Nationwide Insurance. This four man's captain's choice tournament includes mulligans, a delicious lunch buffet, and prizes. And we still have a few spots for teams if you need to get out of the office after this week's cold weather because it will be sunny and sixty-five by T.O. time at one o'clock. The excitement continues with the annual Taste of Darlington. It will be held next Thursday, next Thursday, April eleventh, at the Track Two Top Team from seven to nine P.M. in the infield garage area. We have more vendors scheduled than we've ever had, more than forty tables of food. We'll have a host of delicious food to sample, including a taco bar, frog legs, tenderloin, barbecue, chicken wings, coffee, desserts, beef jerky, and more. Tickets are thirty dollars in advance and thirty-five at the gate. Tickets are available in Florence at the Healthy Food Store and Beef Jerky Outlet, in Hartsfield at Berry Bookstore in Carolina Bank, in Lamar and Society Hill at Carolina Bank, and in Darlington at City Hall at the Water Department, Carolina Bank on Orange Street, Main Street Jewelers, the Jewelers Bench, Dedicated Community Bank, the Newsom Press, and the Purple Fish Coffee Company. Businesses, individuals, civic groups, and churches are invited to join the DDR community. We recently welcomed Tapi's Diner to our group this month. Members can give us a call or send us an email to info@buildupdarlington.org and we'll feature your news, employee recognition, sales, new products, special hours, and events with people interested in Darlington, as well as TV stations, radio stations, and newspapers throughout our text and email news alert system. Memberships are a hundred and fifty dollars for most businesses, a hundred dollars for civic groups, churches, and nonprofits, and fifty dollars for individuals. You can download an application at buildupdarlington.org where anyone can sign up for the news alerts that will come directly to your phone or directly to your email, whichever you choose. Also coming up, we have Cleanup Darlington Day through the Beautification Board and the Darlington Garden Club. That will be nine A.M. to noon, Saturday, April twenty-seventh. We'll be meeting in front of the chamber. And we knew this year we'll be giving free T-shirts to the first hundred volunteers. We've had as many as forty people show up, forty or more people show up, and so we really want to kind of get the word out that we're going to take our town and make it a beautiful place. Other upcoming events, the Bringing Downtown Alive Concert Committee will meet six P.M., Thursday, April eighteenth, at Mama Mia's. The first concert date is Thursday, May twenty-third. And the monthly Members Breakfast is at eight A.M., Wednesday, April twenty-fourth, at Tapi's Diner. Free members and five dollars for others. And those Members' meetings are at eight A.M. on the last Wednesday of the month through October. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, Chamber of Commerce, Lieutenant Tom.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The chamber is sponsoring a Lunch and Learn on April the eighteenth, this month, at the South of Pearl. The speaker is Doug Grady. He's written several books, some of which, Seven Principles, Principles of the Ripple Effect, Seven Levels of Integrity, Personal Marketing, Open MAM. He's been a speaker for over twenty years, motivational speaker. He is wanted worldwide. We're very lucky to have him in Darlington. It will be at South of Pearl beginning at noon on the eighteenth. Lunch is complimentary. Yeah, yeah, I saw you look up.
Yes, I am.
So this is a Lunch and Learn, beginning at noon. Space is very limited because we're going to do it in the upstairs dining room, to the left, the big dining room. People have responded to my emails, so I have several spaces available. So if you want to attend, please call me. Most people have my telephone number, you can call the chamber number, and it will forward to my cellphone, or you can email them. I'm hoping we get a good response. He had said that he would give out books to the people that were in attendance. So free lunch, free book, it's worth the time. He's a very good motivational speaker. So it's worth spending your lunch at the South of Pearl and listening to a very good motivational speaker.
Who is the speaker?
April the eighteenth, Doug Grady. G.R.A.D.Y., D.O.U.G., is his first name. What's on the horizon is Freedom Fest, June the twenty-ninth, at the Raceway, five to ten.
June what, ma'am?
The twenty-ninth.
June what, ma'am?
Yes, ma'am. Do I have any questions? Does anybody want to sign up for the Lunch and Spaces? I mean, the Lunch and Spaces are very, very limited. Anybody in the city wants to sign up, call Howard or call me, and Howard will yell at me.
We'll leave a number, a message at the chamber, a number, it's three nine three two six four one.
And that goes to my cellphone. It's all, all the calls are forwarded right now to my cellphone.
What is it?
Three nine three two six four one.
And it's June twenty-fourth, son.
Freedom Fest is June the twenty-ninth. The Lunch and Learn is April the eighth.
Eight, twelve o'clock.
Yes, ma'am.
South of Pearl. Any other questions?
Like I said, spaces are going to be limited because we're using that large
Large room upstairs.
Dining room upstairs. And I don't want to pack so many people in there that it's just, it's just too tight. I beg your pardon?
Fire marshal, get after it.
Yeah, people, yeah. Plus, I mean, we're all friendly and we love each other, but you know, elbow to elbow, it's just not that comfortable in there. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Citizens wishing to speak, we have Mr. George, he's a historic of the district.
My name is George Chase, I live at three seven nine West Broad Street. My wife and I, we love old homes, that's the third one we've restored. And we bought it, purchased it fourteen years ago, and I have spent a small fortune there. And it's now on the historical register, and I'll have to be honest with you. The peak of my excitement was when we bought the house, it's gone down ever since then. There seems to be no pride in Darlington of the historical district. You claim it, but no one cares. The house to, facing my house, the house to the left of it, was empty when I moved there fourteen years ago. And I was told by my daughter, who lived down the street for quite a few years, it was empty ten to fifteen years before I moved there. So that's twenty-five to thirty years it's been empty. When we moved there, it could have been repaired, it's beyond repaired, now the back of the house is caving in. It was condemned five or six years ago. The red sign went up on the door one day, it was drawn the next day, so much for that. Supposedly it's all that is now to be tore down. I'm waiting to see what happens, and I have no grand anticipations there. The house to the right of me is a rental house. To put it mildly, it's a rental dump in historical district. I talked to one of the individuals that lived there, he left about three months ago. He said they hadn't had any heat all winter, had two electric heaters. They were pulling water through a garden hose out the hall from the house next door. I turned that into the water part and went back a week later and stomp run the hose, they're still pulling water off of it. So evidently, things aren't being forced. If we're going to have a historical district, let's take a little pride in it. As of right now, we made a mistake, a bad mistake. I had my house appraised, and I have about eighty thousand more in it paying no labor than I can sell it for. And that's sad, there's some beautiful houses on that street. I realize people, some people can't afford to fix them up. But some of them can, and the least cities do, it encourages them to do something to make things look a little bit better. The grass is never cut in the front yard next door. I complained about it repeatedly, started about five years ago. Up to that point, I cut the grass all summer. So it got cut once or twice a summer after that, and then I quit about two years ago. If we're going to have a historical district, let's take some pride in it. Either that, take the sign that we're going to have what it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
So what was your address again?
Three seven nine West Broad Street, Judge Hinni's old house.
That's to the right of, we go down Evans Avenue, after you pass P. N. Street, stop sign.
Take a right, fourth house, you got, fifth house.
No unfinished business, new business. Proclamation, P. Coalition Against the Misgendered Section Assault.
How are y'all doing?
Good.
Good. My name is Sierra, I'm the victim advocate here in Darlington. We have an office over at one five Orange Street. For everyone who doesn't know, I always like to tell everyone because a lot of people here don't know that we have an office in Darlington. So just to let y'all know that April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month. So we're here to raise some public awareness about sexual assault and sexual violence. Right now, Charlotte is passing out some brochures and some ribbons and stuff to everyone. And we also have some action ones in case anybody else needs some. And I also wanted to introduce Charlotte, who is our new volunteer coordinator for Hartsfield and the Darlington County area. We are having an event for April twenty-fourth called Denim Day, which is going to be, if your work allows it, for everyone to wear jeans in honor of Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And if you do wear it, just hashtag Denim Day PD and post it on your social media. And we're going to put a collage together for all of the PD and everything. So if y'all can do that, just hashtag it, and we'll have it on our website. If y'all have any questions, or y'all have anyone that needs any of our services, please don't hesitate to give me a call. The number for my office is eight four three three eight three five five three four. And I'm Sierra, the victim advocate again.
What you said about April twenty-fourth, you handed?
Denim Day.
Denim Day. Where is this going to be at? Where's it going to be at?
It's just, it's P.D., P.D.Y., yeah. We're trying to, yeah, get it on the Facebook and get some publicity out there. Anybody have any questions?
What was that, what side you said, if you take the pictures, you want to put them on your?
Put the hashtag.
Hashtag.
Denim Day PD, yes, ma'am.
And your number, you?
Eight four three three eight three five five three four. You guys, do you want to say yourself?
I'm just glad to be here.
Let me read, the City of Darlington proclamation, April two thousand nineteen. Whereas sexual assault affects adults and children in the P.U. region, not only as victim survivors, but also as family members, loved ones, friends, neighbors, or coworkers of victims. And whereas sexual assault is one of the most devastating crimes in our society today, the victims often suffering with lifelong pain from physical injury and serious emotional trauma. And whereas the volunteers and service providers in our communities are dedicated to providing care to sexual assault survivors through twenty-four hour hotline counseling, support groups, advocacy, medical care, and education. And whereas the two thousand eighteen Services of Sexual Assault Awareness Month encourage these people to learn more about sexual violence and its prevention, and how to get survivors healed from this personal violation. Now therefore, I glorify, see highest, ma'am, the City of Darlington and the State of South Carolina, do hereby proclaim April two thousand nineteen as Sexual Assault Awareness Month through the P.U. region, and encourages to all, the, the all citizens to work together to prevent sexual assault and ensure life free from harm for the residents of the P.U. region. Glory see highest, ma'am, Darlington. I think we do such a marvelous job.
We appreciate your help, too.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much. The CDBG Fair Housing Resolution. Whereas the City of Darlington desires that all its citizens be afforded the opportunity to obtain a decent, safe, and sound living environment, as whereas the City of Darlington rejects discrimination on the basis of race, nationality, color, sex, national order, disability, and our community status in the safe sale of rental or provision of other housing services. And whereas the State of South Carolina enacted the South Carolina Fair Housing Law in nineteen ninety-eight, and whereas April is recognized nationally as Fair Housing Month. Now therefore, be resolved that the City of Darlington does designate April two thousand nineteen as Fair Housing Month. Adopted this, set a date of eight.
Everyone needs to sign this off, assist around here.
I want to get someone to vote on the resolution, please. Make a motion, please.
What if we approve the resolution, if we state the Fair Housing Act, designate April two thousand and nineteen as Fair Housing Month?
I second. Any more discussion? It's the prophet move that we, um, about the fair housing, just make the April two thousand nineteen the Fair Housing Month, all in favor, if there's no sign of aye. Ladies and gentlemen, right, Mr. Carers? Thank you. Um, the West End Heritage Corporation, the funding request, okay?
I'll take that. Good evening, everyone. I've been asked to give the history of the Darlington Manufacturing Company, which is very much integral to the West End Development Corporation. For those of you who don't know, at one time, at the end of Orange Street, there was, there was a four or five story building. And in eighteen seventy, James Live Coker, who was also the founder of Smokey Products Company, put together a group of investors to put a textile plant here in Darlington. And the name was Darlington Manufacturing Company. And eventually, it was bought out by Milliken Associates, led by Richard Milliken. And it operated on site from eighteen seventy to nineteen fifty-six. And so that encompasses eighty-six years of history of so many families and people working at that site. I had family that worked there, my dad worked there as a child and decided that he didn't want to work there. He wanted to go work for the Civilian Conservation Corps, never wanted to go work there again. And so some folks stayed and worked and worked and worked, and others went out and decided they wanted to do something else. But the thing that was most important about the cotton mill is that life not only revolved around working there, but it was also something called a company store, where people would go and shop, and they would get haircuts. And there was a school that was also there, it's where the Auto Parts Place is across from Cleveland Street, where the site for the memorial is set up. And then I think the, the really sad thing about this is in nineteen fifty-six, there was a, the group of employees that wanted to go union. And so they voted, and by about seventeen votes, they decided to go union. And Richard Milliken said, if you ever go union, I'm going to shut the whole thing down. So in nineteen fifty-six, he did that. And then they had a sale. And they took every piece of property out of the cotton mill and sold it piece by piece and sent it all around the country. There was a gentleman that ran the place, that was a manager, he tried to put together a group to buy it, lock, stock, and barrel, but Milliken wouldn't do that. He sold it piece by piece, it couldn't ever be put together again. And then he took the further step of blackballing every person that voted to go union. They couldn't work in the state of South Carolina, they had to go to Michigan to work. And something that a lot of folks don't know about in the city of Darlington is, is the people, and the descendants of those families suffered because they could not find work in the state of South Carolina. So a group put together a class action lawsuit against Richard Milliken. And for twenty-five years, it worked its way through the courts. Eventually, it ended up in the United States Supreme Court, where the Supreme Court decided against Richard Milliken. And he had to pay twenty-five million dollars to the descendants of the folks that worked at the cotton mill. And I think that's very important to note because, in my book, Richard Milliken is not a good name. Maybe he is in the rest of the state of South Carolina, but in Darlington, he's not. He did our folks wrong, and we don't need to forget that. So what we've come forward for you tonight is we want to recognize those many generations of people that worked at the Darlington Manufacturing Company, that sometimes gave their lives to support their families. And something else that I didn't mention too, all, all the homes that were around there were owned by Milliken Company. So it was very much a closed shop, everything was handled there. If you ever read Mr. Shepherd's column in the paper, it tells a lot about so much of the life that was going on there now. And there's a group that's put together that wants to do a memorial to the many people that worked on that site. And Peggy Sheffield is going to tell you about that effort right now, she's going to stand up and give a little bit of the history on that.
Madam Mayor, Council members. Ms. Reed, I want to thank you for coming to a groundbreaking, just a few days back, and supporting us. We thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Well, Howard, you have just about covered everything I had planned, it's up.
I'm sorry.
Well, I'll begin with a little bit of personal part then, maybe that you didn't come across in your speech. But my name is Peggy Sheffield, and I represent the West End Heritage Corporation. We are a group that was formed several years ago in hopes to erect a memorial to the people that did work at the Darlington Manufacturing Company for many years. And it was, many of us know this as the Old Cotton Mill. Howard, you're right, it's not a good name to, to hear Roger Milliken in our town, in our area. But besides that, those, those days are gone. We have to be bigger and better than what our people got treated at that time. And remember those hardworking people that depended on that mill for a living every day. And I'm here tonight to ask you for help. The mill was a vital part of Darlington's growth in its day. Our town was booming during those years, from eighteen eighty-three to nineteen fifty-six. When the mill closed in nineteen fifty-six, it employed around five hundred people. That's five hundred homes and families depending on that mill. It was devastating to our town and to our people. Many had to move, as Howard mentioned, to wait to find work to support their families. My father, one of those, could not work here in South Carolina, but had to travel back and forth daily to Laurel Hill, North Carolina, to work in the spring mills. He was just one of those many who had to find work somewhere else. It has taken years for our town and our people to recover. As a corporation, we have raised enough money to purchase the land at the corner of Cleveland and Pearl Street, and to pay for the monument. This lot is located in what was, was known back then as the Old Mill Village, and is close to the Old Mill and the company store, where those folks went to shop for their goods. I want you to think about where that corner lot is. It is a perfect spot, in my opinion, because of its location, of the mill, the company store, and all the homes where those people lived. We are now trying to raise enough money to complete this memorial. We are hoping to raise anywhere from twenty to thirty thousand dollars plus to finish this project. The more we raise, the more we can do on this spot. We want this memorial to look like a small park. I think you have some pictures that have been given to you to help you see what we hope to accomplish in this, with landscaping and benches and a small walk wall around it. We want it to be invited for those who come to visit and read about the history of the Darlington Manufacturing Company and those who worked there. The cotton mill is a part of our history and our heritage. And very few are left to see that this is completed. Most of those that worked there are gone. There are a few still around. There are a few still around that are, are here, but are way up in age. The monument will be placed in the middle of the lot. On the front of the monument will be three pictures of the mill, and on the back will be a writing by Mr. Bill Shepherd. I think most of us here are familiar with Mr. Shepherd and his writings, dedicating the memorial to the memory of the men, women, and children who worked at the Old Mill. Excuse me. It's a little far to read my notes from this time.
You're doing fine.
For those, for those who worked there or have a, um, member that had worked there, there will be pavers that are being sold to have their names put in memory of or in honor of that worked there and placed around the bottom of the monument. I have forms if you, um, know someone, any of your family worked there. I'd be glad that you contact me after the meeting, and I would give you a form. You may have friends that you know will, that worked there. And the cost of the pavers are fifty dollars. Also, we will have four levels that will be recognized for their donations. We hope that you will feel led to help us complete this memorial. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Excellent.
Thank you.
We have money, so we have money, um, we can probably give you something out of tourism. Let us go. How much can?
Five thousand.
That would be wonderful. We thank you for anything and everything. If you would give the word to any of our businesses around town that would love to donate, we would be just delighted.
We're also going to assist them and try to get funding from other sources.
From sources too.
Thank you very much.
But we need, need your vote on that.
Can I get a motion so we can vote on this?
Okay. I'll motion that we approve five thousand dollars out of hospitality fund, um, to go towards this, um, West End Heritage Corporation and the cotton mill on the memorial.
Second. Okay, here's a property motion, a second, that we give five thousand dollars, how much? For the West End Heritage Corporation. All in favor? If you don't say aye.
Aye.
Ladies have the same right, most who cares? Mr. Garland, get with you. Where's some other people, let them sit up?
Yes, yes, this is on the, can, can y'all just stand up, please? These are, um, well.
I'm her neighbor.
This is, this is Mr. Jim Kelly. He is our president.
Okay.
And, um, um, our vice president is, um, unable to attend. Our secretary happens to be on the tail, and I'm the trencher.
Well, I think y'all doing a fine job, but what happened to you in nineteen fifty-six? That was horrible.
Well, it wasn't just to us, it was to our whole town.
Whole town, yeah.
And it was just devastating. It was.
Make sure that you keep it up.
Thank you so much. Thank you for, for listening.
You're welcome. Darlington County First Step. Anybody here from Darlington County First Step?
Um, E, first reading of ordinance two thousand nineteen dash zero seven, zoning of five oh four Young Street, R ten. We had our second, um, reading, um, annexation of it last month, so now we're in the process of zoning it. Okay, so I get a motion to rezonate?
I'll motion that we, um, did the first reading of ordinance two thousand nineteen dash oh seven zoning of five oh four Young Street, R ten.
Second.
Any more discussion? It's a property motion that we, um, first reading of ordinance two thousand nineteen dash zero seven zoning of five oh four Young Street, R ten. All in favor of the motion? If you don't say aye. Ladies have the same right, most who cares? Um, F, first reading of the ordinance two thousand nineteen dash zero seven, rezoning of the second block of Pearl Street. All the time, we thought it was business, but it's not, like the AT, AT&T area, the comp place, the tax place, and the denture place. That whole block, it has to be rezoned.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance two oh one nine dash oh eight, rezoning of the second block of Pearl Street.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Okay, it's property motion, a second, that, um, we do the first reading of the ordinance two thousand nineteen dash zero eight, rezoning of the second block of Pearl Street. All in favor? If you don't say aye. Ladies have the same right, most who cares? Mr. Garland?
Madam Mayor, let's just mention for the record what type of zoning we'll have it released on.
Certainly. So the properties in question are the AT&T at the, uh, the corner of Orange and Dargon, um, the Dennis Insurance and Ann Dennis and Associates, the auto sales place at the corner across from Trinity United and Methodist Church, then the dentist's office that is next to that, and the florist shop at the corner of Sycamore and Pearl, and then the accounting office that is next door to that. These property owners, um, new property, uh, new business came into the florist, um, shop that is open. They, they've been open since January, um, and this is how we kind of ran into this problem. Uh, she went to get her a sign, and when we looked at the zoning, it had it listed as R ten. Now that is, uh, the most strict residential zoning there is that we have. Um, and that is clearly not what that is. Um, it's been load, it's been zoned low density residential this whole time, but, um, it's clearly been biz, a commercial area.
Yeah.
Um, and so we were just, we couldn't find any paperwork saying that it had been changed. People had anecdotally said that it had been changed. We couldn't find any paperwork, so now we are creating that paperwork to make it all, uh, proper. Uh, the planning commission, uh, had a public hearing about it, and, uh, all the property owners, except for AT&T, um, responded, and they actually filled out forms saying they would like this change.
Oh.
Um, they would like to be changed to commercial because otherwise they really can't have a sign. Um, so they wanted to be changed for commercial zoning. And the planning commission suggested, uh, recommended changing the zoning district to R ten to Core Commercial. Core Commercial is our downtown area, and that is also what is on the opposite side of the street. After that, after Sycamore, it becomes general commercial when you're fronting Pearl Street, so to give you an idea.
Thank you, Sean. Okay, G, bid approval repair for the replace, to replace Carnegie Library roof.
Um, I'll take it.
Was there a, a motion and a second on the, on zoning?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I didn't plan it. We did it.
All right, uh, Mayor and Council, we, uh, we have, uh, looked at this roof which started leaking, I believe, last summer. Um, we had it repaired in oh eight as part of the, uh, program to rehab the Carnegie Library Building. Um, but we, with the, with the gift from the state of Beth Norman Phillips, fifty thousand dollars to be used exclusively for the Carnegie Library, um, we had a chance to re-roof the entire roof, and we had, uh, the building inspector look at it. He, he said, if we're going to keep the building, we need to go ahead and do that, um, because any repairs would last maybe two to six years, and then we're going to be right back where we were. So we're, we're recommending the, uh, the low bid from Gardner Roofing of thirty-five thousand, three hundred fifty-six dollars to re-roof the entire top, plus also we would need to clean out the drain too, because everybody that we had look at it said that, said that the drain needed else to be cleaned out. Um, that will help in keeping that roof, uh, from leaking at any time in the future.
Mr. Garland, you have something?
I was just standing here for questions. We had two other roofers look at it, um, only Gardner Roofing and one other roofer even gave us any pricing, and the other roofer said that they would not redo the whole roof. They don't, they don't do that kind of roof, so.
So the total price of the material, maybe thirty-five thousand, three hundred fifty-six dollars? Did I get a motion?
Madam Mayor, I would make a motion that we approve the bid of thirty-five thousand, three hundred fifty-six dollars for re-roofing of the Carnegie Building as proposed by Gardner Roofing, recognizing that it could run an additional amount should any decking or other woodwork be required.
A second. The second, we see the bid out from Gardner Roofing, thirty-five thousand, three hundred fifty-six dollars, and we said, tell the, the distinct debt, what you said?
Any decking or other woodwork.
Woodwork.
Close any that would be involved, any additional amount would be involved with any decking or wood, other woodwork.
Okay, okay. All in favor? If you don't say aye. Ladies have the same right? Um, number nine, um, received information. I'm going to quote, no, I'm going to read it. Number ten, um, I went to the purple fish this morning. It's just as cute in there as it can be. Um, I went in and talked, uh, there was no one in there, but before I left, one lady did come in and get espresso. She got espresso out there. It's a nice place to go and sit in, um, it's going to step at twelve o'clock, things, and then on Friday night, they have a, like they're playing music. Yeah, so you need to check it out. Um, it was seven, it was seven in the morning, eight?
I think so, but Monday through Thursday is it?
Monday through Thursday, seven thirty to twelve thirty, and then Friday night, six thirty to nine thirty.
Six thirty to nine thirty on Friday. But it was nice, it was pretty tight. When Jordan left, he left, and that was, you know, the table work component, what can you get a table? That's real nice, and you can, it's real nice to see. Anybody else have a comment?
Madam Mayor, I'd like for Mr. Garland to assign that him that would be the best person or person to look at it. Our current ordinance relating to the historical district, since Mr. Chase has brought up some issues with it, to get copies of perhaps surrounding areas and how the other cities and communities, Sheraw, and, uh, Hartful and others are dealing with it, to see if there's some changes that could be made that would help, um, make it enforceable and help a, an historical district look like what was intended without taking away the value, but perhaps not putting it in such a situation that a homeowner has allowed a piece of property to just deteriorate and the back of it fall off because they couldn't fix it. So we just need, I would ask, we'd take a look at it.
It looks bad, it really looks bad. Because I thought the man that owned it was going to fix it up, but then I kept looking at it, and I saw there was nothing being done with it. So Mr. Garland, take a look at it and see?
Man would, um, say that's fine, but we need to wait till after the winter season. So, uh, that would be the only caveat I would have there.
Okay, um, reminder, May seventh, two thousand nineteen, six thirty PM, regular monthly meeting, Darlington County Council. Can I get a motion?
I'll motion that we adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Now y'all, ladies have the same right, thank you.